Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, May 28, 2012. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in Singing Old Canada. Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio rendition of our anthem. I'd look for a motion for the minutes of the previous council meeting minutes. I see Councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. But I move that we accept the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on May 14, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councillor Crokin. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Councillor O'Toole, you noted something?
Yes, I already made it noted. It was from the Peace Library System. It was actually not the Peace Library System. It was the Grand Prairie Public Library under Council Member Reports.
Okay, thanks very much for catching that one, Councillor O'Toole. I'm sure we'll have that change made. Any other errors or omissions that were noted? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote to adopt those minutes with that change. Thank you. And that motion carries. And then we'd look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the agenda with additions of agenda items as follows. 9.7.1 tender T-41-55212, 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program, Rehab Sites. Number 9.7.2 tender T-46-55212, Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program, Site 184th Avenue. 9.7.3 tender T-33-55212, 2012 Sidewalk Program. Number 9.7.4 tender T-34-55212, 2012 Trail Construction. 9.7.5 tender T-42-55212, 2012 Road Rehabilitation Overlay Program, Overlay Sites. 9.7.6 tender T-35-55212, 2012 East Link Center, South Parking Lot. And 9.8 Sponsorship Applications.
Thank you very much, Councillor Gustafson. Nothing else to add? Okay, that's enough for tonight. Okay, any further additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on the agenda. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. It's an opportunity for anyone in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. But before I call for the delegations, I'll just note that all the council members look splendid in their Municipal Government Day blue this Wednesday, 4:00 at Musquessee Park, where the City of Grand Prairie is once again holding Municipal Government Day. And council members and members of administration are showing off their pride and encouraging the community to come out and join us. So if anybody wonders why we're all coordinated today, it doesn't happen every week. So, as I said, this is the delegation portion of our agenda. We did have, we have two items of business that we know about. I'd ask first, though, if there was anybody that didn't let us know that they were coming ahead of time that would like to speak to council on any community-related matter. Is there anybody that would like to come forward to speak to council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody that's not, that's coming forward on anything that we hadn't heard about ahead of time. So I'd call for Mr. Mike Sullivan from Alberta, First Call. Mike, if you'd like to join us at the front table here, please introduce yourself for our city clerk and be welcome.
Afternoon, or actually, good evening. Mike Sullivan here from Alberta, One Call. I'm the president of Alberta, One Call. The office is located in Calgary, Alberta, and we provide the One Call service to all of Alberta. Before you dig, we are the ones to call, or contact through the Internet as well. Annually, we process about 350,000 locate requests for the province of Alberta. And that results in about 1.5 million notifications to bird utility owners and operators throughout the province. That One Call triggers a process whereby public safety is virtually assured. And the hydrocarbons and the services to our everyday life that we are so used to and come to expect go along uninterrupted, preserving public safety, community safety, and the integrity of Alberta infrastructure. I have with me today just a very simple, call-before-you-dig ceremonial groundbreaking shovel that the mayors and the councils of the major urban centers in Alberta will be receiving this month. And I wish to present this to the mayor, Bill Given, as well as to all councillors, to use for any groundbreaking ceremonies that might occur in the Grand Prairie for the life of the city. This is one of the, still one of the fastest-growing cities in Canada. Flying in here today, there's lots of activity going on. Driving here from the airport, there's lots of activity going on in the city. And making that One Call is going to, at the end of the day, save people's lives. I've been involved in this type of business for the past 20 years throughout the country, and now focused on Alberta. And it gives me a great pleasure, and I thank you for having me here today to present this shovel to all of you. And I look forward to working with you. Anytime you need us, we'll be there for you. If you want to have us involved in a civic event, we'd love to be there. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mike. Opportunity for any council members that have questions. Councillor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Sullivan, so how long does it typically take for the time I call you till you come and I can start digging?
Well, first of all, we don't show up. It's the locating services that show up. They aren't affiliated with Alberta, One Call. It's a separate business. It provides a service. We ask that you call a minimum of 48 hours, or contact us by Internet, 48 hours before you begin your project. That's two business days, working days.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. I see a couple others in the queue. Councillor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Sullivan, what is the cost for your service?
The cost of our service is nothing, zero. It's free.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. The, the way we manage our fees is through the members. So, for example, today with me, Alliance Pipeline is represented by Mr. Trevor Lowberg, and they are a member of Alberta, One Call. So if their pipeline is impacted by potential groundbreaking or ground disturbance, they will be notified and they pay for that notification.
So obviously, there is absolutely no excuse for not making that phone call.
There's no excuse. Unfortunately, the one unfortunate aspect of Alberta, One Call is that not every bird utility owner and operator in Alberta is a member. We're very fortunate to have over 700 members of Alberta, One Call, the most of any One Call system in Canada. Actually, if you combined all the other ones in Canada together, we'd have just about 700 members. However, it is not a requirement of every utility under every jurisdiction to be a member of a One Call center. And I hope to change that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Actually, just a comment. I was online today and used your service, and I've just wanted to tell the group that it's, it's pretty darn painless. So it took me about 30 seconds online to fill it out for my house.
That's excellent. Glad to hear that. One of the biggest part of our campaign this year is click before you dig. We're all familiar with call-before-you-dig. It's synonymous with what we do. But you're exactly right. You go online, and if you click before you dig, it is seamless, painless, as you said, and you can do it 24 hours per day. Those tickets will be reviewed by one of our CSRs between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. every day.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Well, typically, when the City of Grand Prairie does a groundbreaking, we go about that far, maybe six inches down. But obviously, safety is important to our organization, and we appreciate the fact that safety is the focus of your organization as well. And so it'd be a pleasure to accept the Alberta, One Call shovel on behalf of council. So maybe I'll come around, and we can do a quick presentation and-
Great, thank you.
Thanks very much for that, Mike. We certainly appreciated you being here today. Our second item of business under delegations is a piece of happy business. The City of Grand Prairie has had a committee called the Pursuit of Excellence Committee since the 1995 Canada Winter Games. The Pursuit of Excellence Committee was a fund that was created with a legacy, the cash legacy of the 1995 Winter Games. And it has been used to support athlete development, coach development, international travel, and travel for athletes since that time. And over the course of those many years, it has benefited many local athletes in ensuring that they can achieve their dreams and take their performances to the next level. As a part of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee, the City of Grand Prairie has two scholarships. The first is the Pursuit of Excellence Scholarship, which allows athletes to further their training and development. And the second is the Pursuit of Excellence International Excellence Scholarship, which allowed higher caliber athletes to travel and attend events and competitions and represent Grand Prairie on the world stage. Through the course of its history, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee had strong community involvement from two particular individuals that it's going to be a pleasure to recognize here tonight. Over the course of its history, these two individuals beat the bushes to ensure that the Pursuit of Excellence was known among the sporting community. They worked to ensure that athletes were made aware of the scholarships and solicited applications. And it's a great pleasure tonight to be able to recognize more than a decade of work from these two individuals in supporting our committee by change, officially changing the name of those two scholarships. So the first scholarship, the one that's focused on local athletes, excuse me, on, on local endeavors, we're going to be naming the Bob Neufeld Scholarship. Mr. Bob Neufeld served on the Pursuit of Excellence Committee since its inception in 1995 until just a year or so ago. And Bob was one of those individuals who worked tirelessly through the Pursuit of Excellence to ensure that our local athletes were able to compete and that they had the funding to enable them to do that. Bob, over the course of his time in Grand Prairie, though, has been a fantastic community volunteer. He's been recognized with the George Repko Award from the City of Grand Prairie. He has been a coach, a volunteer, a teacher, and an avid outdoorsman and advocate for outdoor pursuits. And so it's a great honor to be able to recognize Bob with the naming of this scholarship in his honor. The second name for the International Scholarship is the City of Grand Prairie is going to officially recognize Ms. Perky McCullough by naming it the Perky McCullough International Excellence Scholarship. We're joined here tonight by Pat McCullough, representing the McCullough family. Perky also served on the Pursuit of Excellence Committee since its inception until just last year. And she, in tandem with Bob, beat the bushes of the schools and ensured that our athletes knew about this. Perky's legacy in sport obviously reaches far beyond the borders of Grand Prairie. She's recognized in the Alberta Sport Hall of Fame. And she made numerous trips internationally with different sport organizations, and always worked to ensure that local athletes were competing on the world stage. So it's an honor and a pleasure to be able to recognize these two individuals who worked tirelessly together for the City of Grand Prairie and for our athletes by ensuring that their legacy will live on together. And I'd like to, if I could ask Pat and Bob to come forward, I'd like to unveil the official plaque that all future scholarship recipients will receive. The people at home won't get this, but the people here will. So, Bob, we know that you and Perky worked as a team to ensure that athletes got the best in our community. And we appreciated your efforts together over the years on the Pursuit of Excellence Committee. So it's a pleasure to recognize that the two of you will stay together and continue to serve the community through these scholarships that have carried your names over the years. Pat, thank you so much for being here and recognizing your mom. We certainly appreciate the fact that you're joining us tonight. And it's sad and unfortunate that your mom can't be. But we really appreciate your family agreeing to lend her name to this recognition. Thank you so much.
Great friend at ANW, too.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Neufeld, and to the McCullough family for allowing your name to stand in support of amateur athletes and, and those in our community who are striving for excellence. We certainly appreciate it. And we appreciate all the work over the years. So I'll do one more call. If there's anybody that wanted to bring forward a public delegation on any community-related matter, and I don't see anybody in the crowd coming forward, so we'll move on to our public hearings. We have item 6.1, which is a number of public hearings, and maybe I'll, excuse me, I'll call that public hearing to order, and we'll look for an introduction from administration. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The purpose of this presentation is to present three bylaws to council. They are amending bylaws to the Northwest, Hidden Valley, and Gateway Area Structure Plans. In the, at the time of writing the report, administration had not received any response to the public notification. But after writing the report and submitting it for the council agenda package, we did receive a letter from Bearstow-Laners-Ketchum. I believe that letter has been circulated to all of council, and I know that there are some individuals here to speak to that. So that's the public notification portion. To give, I'll, I'll let the reports speak for themselves for the most part, but I'll expand on the background of this situation we have here by way of a slideshow. So on the screens there, we're dealing with the, this is the subject area, the area that's highlighted in yellow. So anytime I reference the subject area, this is what we're talking about. And for those that are a little challenged to read air photos and maps, I've put some landmarks there.
Can you back one slide, Joe?
Yep. Okay, so this is the subject area. The new hospital is going right here. Oops. So right off the bypass, in between 116th Street and the Bear Creek forms the north boundary. Okay? The area is governed by three area structure plans. A portion of the Northwest Area Structure Plan goes into the subject area. A portion of the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan goes into the subject area, and the Gateway Area Structure Plan. Thus the three amending bylaws. If you take all of those bylaws and pull the transportation concepts out of them and overlay them in the subject area, this is the composite that you get. And in this graphic, it's showing the blue roads being a, of a collector classification. And then the pink one is an arterial road. So if you think of other arterials in the city, we're talking 68th, 84th, 116th, 132nd. So it, it does seem a little out of place in terms of, of classification. That is the arterial road right there. Again, part of all three area structure plans. Years ago, we started a traffic study to address a totally different issue, and it had a bit of a ripple effect. And we stumbled into this area and realized a problem with this network. And that network, or the problem is that all of the traffic in this area all funnels toward the arterial, and then it comes down into the gateway area, which already has high traffic volumes, and goes to the 107th Avenue intersection. So when you take all the traffic from the subject area, compound it with the traffic from the gateway area, funnel it all over to 107th, the 107th Avenue intersection fails miserably. It's, it's, it's built to capacity. There is no more room to expand it, and there's no more, no more capacity to add more traffic volume to it. So we started to look for alternatives. Sorry, I'll back up a second. The supporting documents showing that that intersection is a problem is a Northwest Area Structure Plan Traffic Impact Assessment, which ISL completed in 2008. And a lot of what was found in that, TIA, was backed up in the Transportation Master Plan of 2009. So the new information since we started on this study, which has been going on for many years, is that the hospital changed locations three times. So we'd start to work, and then, oh, we're getting a hospital, okay. And then we'd start to work again, and the hospital would change locations. So then we'd start again. And then, then it was most recently announced, announced that it was, it's to be built on the college lands. I've highlighted that on the aerial photo there. Another new bit of information since we started the study is that the province will allow an additional access to the bypass. For years, we were working under the information that there were not to be any more accesses to the bypass. So a lot of the work that we had done was on an assumption that has since changed. So this has been kind of an ongoing project with new information continuously. That new intersection will be where the red star is on the air photo. And the hospital, in order to service the hospital and tie in the new intersection, as well as provide a secondary access off of 110th Street, some of the road network in this area has been established. The amendments to the Northwest and Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan are intended to remove the entire transportation network from the subject area. And the idea behind that is, all along, we've been noting that the 107th Avenue intersection is a problem, but we've been chasing a solution. And that solution just keeps escaping us, and time goes on, time goes on. You know, many years later, we still haven't amended a plan that needs amending. And in that sense, it's, it's, it's a little challenging to leave an area structure plan out there with information that you know you just can't support. It's problematic. But again, we don't have a solution to replace it with. The ideal situation is that we had a new solution. We'd say, let's take out the old one and put in the new one. But we just don't know what that new one will be. The amendments to the Northwest and Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan are temporary in that, again, we're just looking to remove the transportation network. We haven't changed the maps, but we've changed the policy to say that in this area, the transportation network is no longer feasible. We don't know what the transportation network will be, but it will be established, and new amendments will occur. And administration saw it as a reasonable alternative to repealing the entire document. We figured that there was a lot of good information in those area structure plans that didn't warrant removal, i.e. land use, densities, school site provision, utilities, et cetera. So we thought that this was a reasonable compromise to leave a lot of information with the area, but remove this transportation question mark until a solution is found. Since writing the initial report, which forms part of your council package, I spoke with Mr. Ketchum at Bearstow-Laners-Ketchum. And while we were discussing this issue, I realized something that I felt warranted, an addendum to the report. In the letters to the landowners, as well as numerous discussions I've had with people on the phone, as well as the report to council, I was pitching this entire exercise as a, an interim measure in that we weren't closing any doors. We were just acknowledging uncertainties. But in reality, the Gateway Area Structure Plan was, in fact, a final amendment that could have a ripple effect if certain decisions were made in the future after the amendment took place. And those question marks, or those issues hover around the 107th Arterial Right-of-Way right here. So just zooming in on that, the Margaret Adams Manor is right here. And there's a big road right-of-way subdivided out, currently held by the city, but dedicated as a road right-of-way for the future 107th Avenue arterial. Again, the, the intention behind the amendments were to create an interim measure. But in this particular ASP, I showed a road coming this way in cul-de-sac. And then, you know, if, if the ASP were successful, or the amendment were successful, then by rights, the city could close this arterial road right-of-way and do with the land as they please. So I felt that it went against the interim intentions of drafting all of the bylaws, as well as the public notification that I had sent around. So the, if, if the Gateway ASP amendment were approved, it did remove, remove options for future connections. And it was not a temporary amendment as was intended. So the recommendation from administration on, on these issues is that council give second and third readings to bylaw C-1106-03 and C-1208-C, and to not give second and third readings to bylaw C-1216A and rescind first reading of that bylaw. I'm open to any questions.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for administration at this point? Councillor Gustafson.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just one, you mentioned we have, we're allowed to get access off of the bypass. So will there be a major upgrade to 107th as well, plus the entrance to the hospital off the bypass?
Mr. Johnson.
I do not believe there will be any upgrades to the 107th Avenue intersection.
Okay, thanks very much. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Joe, I'll just question because it's really, the traffic's heavy there now. And the province with the hospital changing three times. The hospital owns that road, or the hospital, the province. And it's been talked about expanding that road a bit to help with the congestion, because it seems like that, another entrance so close. And it's only two lanes. Is there talk with the province doing something here?
Mr. Johnson.
There have been some discussions between the city and the province as to the need for expanding the bypass. But I believe that the province has stated that they will not be widening the bypass while it's under their jurisdiction. Perhaps once it's under the city's jurisdiction, the city could do that. But I believe the province's position is that they, they have no current plans to-
Okay, no, that's what I wanted to hear, because I just find it, change the hospital, and then that's going to really affect that area.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor McLean. Councillor Wong.
So, Mr. Johnson, do you have any idea how long it's going to take to reestablish a new transportation network in that area? Is it a long drawn-out process? Because obviously, landowners there are going to want to start some development. And then you can't develop unless you know where the roads are going to go.
Mr. Johnson.
Well, if you had asked me six years ago if I thought that it was going to take long, I would have said no. But it has been a challenge. The most recent, I guess, era of this issue has been that the-
One is an arterial road. So if you think of other arterials in the city, we're talking 68th, 84th, 116th, 132nd. So it, it does seem a little out of place in terms of, of classification. That is the arterial road right there, again, part of all three area structure plans. Years ago, we started a traffic study to address a totally different issue and it had a bit of a ripple effect and we stumbled into this area and realized a problem with this network. And that network, or the problem is that all of the traffic in this area, all funnels toward the arterial and then it comes down into the gateway area, which already has high traffic volumes and goes to the 107th Avenue intersection. So when you take all the traffic from the subject area, compound it with the traffic from the gateway area, funnel it all over to 107th, the 107th Avenue intersection fails miserably. It's, it's, it's built to capacity, there is no more room to expand it and there's no more, no more capacity to add more traffic volume to it. So we started to look for alternatives. Sorry, I'll back up a second. The supporting documents showing that that intersection is a problem is Northwest Area Structure Plan Traffic Impact Assessment, which ISL completed in 2008. And a lot of what was found in that TIA was backed up in the Transportation Master Plan of 2009. So the new information since we started on this study, which has been going on for many years, is that the hospital changed locations three times. So we'd start to work and then, oh, we're getting a hospital, okay. And then we'd start to work again and the hospital would change locations. So then we'd start again and then, then it was most recently announced, announced that it was, it's to be built on the college lands. I've highlighted that on the aerial photo there. Another new bit of information since we started the study is that the province will allow an additional access to the bypass. For years, we were working under the information that there were not to be any more accesses to the bypass. So a lot of the work that we had done was on an assumption that has since changed. So this has been kind of an ongoing project with new information continuously. That new intersection will be where the red star is on the air photo. And the hospital, in order to service the hospital and tie in the new intersection as well as provide a secondary access off of 110th Street, some of the road network in this area has been established. The amendments to the Northwest and Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan are intended to remove the entire transportation network from the subject area. And the idea behind that is, all along, we've been noting that the 107th Avenue intersection is a problem, but we've been chasing a solution and that solution just keeps escaping us and time goes on, time goes on. You know, many years later, we still haven't amended a plan that needs amending. And in that sense, it's, it's, it's a little challenging to leave an area structure plan out there with information that you know, you, you just can't support, it's problematic. But again, we don't have a solution to replace it with. The ideal situation is that we had a new solution. We'd say, let's take out the old one and put in the new one, but we just don't know what that new one will be. The amendments to the Northwest and Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan are temporary in that, again, we're just looking to remove the transportation network. We haven't changed the maps, but we've changed the policy to say that in this area, the transportation network is no longer feasible. We don't know what the transportation network will be, but it will be established and new amendments will occur. And administration saw it as a reasonable alternative to repealing the entire document. We figured that there was a lot of good information in those area structure plans that didn't warrant removal, i.e. land use densities, school site provision, utilities, et cetera. So we thought that this was a reasonable compromise to leave a lot of information with the area, but remove this transportation question mark until a solution is found. Since writing the initial report, which forms part of your council package, I spoke with Mr. Ketchum at Bear Stearns Ketchum and while we were discussing this issue, I realized something that I felt warranted in an addendum to the report. In the letters to the landowners, as well as numerous discussions I've had with people on the phone, as well as the report to council, I was pitching this entire exercise as a, an interim measure in that we weren't closing any doors, we were just acknowledging uncertainties. But in reality, the Gateway Area Structure Plan was in fact, a final amendment that could have a ripple effect if certain decisions were made in the future after the amendment took place. And those question marks, or those issues hover around the 107th arterial right-of-way right here. So just zooming in on that, the Margaret Edson Manor is right here and there's a big road right-of-way subdivided out, currently held by the city, but dedicated as a road right-of-way for the future 107th Avenue arterial. Again, the, the intention behind the amendments were to create an interim measure, but in this particular ASP, I showed a road coming this way in cul-de-sac and then, you know, if, if the ASP were successful, or the amendment were successful, then by rights, the city could close this arterial road right-of-way and do with the land as they please. So I felt that it went against the interim intentions of drafting all of the bylaws, as well as the public notification that I had sent around. So the, if, if the Gateway ASP amendment were approved, it did remove, remove options for future connections and it was not a temporary amendment as was intended. So the recommendation from administration on, on these issues is that council give second and third readings to bylaw C 1106 dash 03 and C 1208 dash C. And to not give second and third readings to bylaw C 1216A and rescind first reading of that bylaw. I'm open to any questions.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Any questions for administration at this point? Counselor Gustafson.
Thanks, Mayor Given. One, you mentioned we have, we're allowed to get access off of the bypass. So will there be a major upgrade to 107th as well, plus the entrance to the hospital off the bypass?
Mr. Johnson?
I do not believe there will be any upgrades to the 107th Avenue intersection.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Joe, I'll just question because it's really, the traffic's heavy there now and the province with the hospital changing three times. The hospital owns that road, or the hospital, the province. And it's been talked about expanding that road a bit to help with the congestion because it seems like that another entrance is so close and it's only two lanes. Is there talk with the province doing something here?
Mr. Johnson?
There have been some discussions between the city and the province as to the need for expanding the bypass, but I believe that the province has stated that they will not be widening the bypass while it's under their jurisdiction. Perhaps once it's under the city's jurisdiction, the city could do that, but I believe the province's position is that they, they have no current plans to.
Okay, no, that's what I wanted to hear because I just find it, change the hospital and that's going to really affect that area.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor McLean. Counselor Wong?
So, Mr. Johnson, do you have any idea how long it's going to take to reestablish a new transportation network in that area? Is it a long drawn out process? Because obviously, landowners there are going to want to start some development and then you can't develop unless you know where the roads are going to go.
Mr. Johnson?
Well, if you had asked me six years ago if I thought that it was going to take long, I would have said no, but it has been a challenge. The most recent, I guess, era of this issue has been that the hospital is in fact going there and there is an access to the bypass and now there is new development interest in the area. The city was taking a very proactive role in creating a network for this area and, you know, the short, short story is that we got frustrated, having many difficulties. Since then, a, and Bear Stearns Ketchum has come to the city and mentioned that they've, they represent a, a number of landowners in the area and we are under the impression that they are actively pursuing a development concept for the area, which includes modifications to the transportation network. They're aware of some of the challenges we face. So when we heard that news, we were more into a reactive position than proactive and that we thought that if they were going to do that, then we'd be in a good position to review the information they put forward, rather than simultaneously coming up with two different concepts and then potentially having some inefficiencies or conflict, if you will, if, if they were drastically different. So at this point, how long is it going to take? That's difficult to say because of the position we're in.
Okay, so I'm getting the sense that administration is willing to work with other engineers in, in trying to find a solution that's going to work for everyone?
Yes, absolutely. We are very excited to put this issue to bed. So we're, we are as excited as anyone to find a solution to this area, or to this issue.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So Joe, I will ask you and I'll also ask, have the opportunity to ask people who speak to the public hearing as well. There are many good uses for city-owned land. One of them that I'm involved in through the Grand Spirit Foundation is land for a new lodge. After much discussion and years of looking for possible city-owned land to help with the project, because to do something like that, we need, we need land, we need support from the provincial government in terms of grants, to make it viable and sustainable. One of the most promising land masses the city has is that there's about four acres, I believe, west of Margaret Edson Manor that shows it's the road right-of-way. So my question is this. How limiting is not having access to that land for transportation purposes? How limiting is it to the, for the developments in that area? So I'll ask you initially and I'll ask others as, as they come to speak.
Mr. Johnson?
If you could, Audrey, if you could bring up the screen there. So the, the piece that Counselor Radburn is referring to is this section of the road right-of-way, as well as this, probably this triangular piece forms part of that, I'm guessing as well. The, my best guess as to whether or not that will form a key component of any transportation network, my guess is that it will not. And the reason that I say that is twofold. One, the direct access to the college quarter will be the 110th Street alignment. That goes directly north to a, a key intersection that will feed the hospital, as well as the new access to the bypass and heading further north into the campus or college quarter. As well, we have enough supporting information to show that the 107th Avenue intersection is problematic. So one of the goals of all of the concepts that we had come up with so far was to divert as much traffic away from the 107th Avenue intersection as possible. So to reestablish that connection, if you will, I think would be counterproductive. The, the primary reason why I did ultimately recommend against the gateway amendment was to acknowledge that it is not likely an interim amendment and that it has the potential to be final because if, if amended, the city could close that and the opportunity for a connection would be gone. It's not, in my opinion anyhow, likely that it will form part of the network.
Thank you. And then my other question was the timing of this and you've tried to answer as best you can to Counselor Wong. Ask that of other speakers too. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions for administration. We will have another opportunity towards the end for questions for administration. So if anything comes up, so we'll move the, move on from the introduction into presentation and submission. I'd ask anyone that's in support of the recommendations for administration to come forward. If there's anyone that's in support of the amendments to come forward. And it doesn't look like there's anybody moving, so I'll ask anybody that's in opposition or that has concerns about the amendments to come forward and, and address council. Please come and introduce yourself. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given and counselors for allowing me to present to you. My name's Ian Ketchum. I think I know most of you. Again, as Joe, Mr. Johnson was mentioning, I do represent a fair number of the landowners that's affected by this potential amendment. I did write a letter to this, the city to let you know that there are some concerns. Over the past few days, I have to say that the, the city personnel, Christine Donnelly and, and Mr. Johnson particularly, were quite helpful and they gave me a lot of their time and in this short amount of time, you can tell from the, the time the letter was written to now, was quite short and they, they were very receptive to give me the attention we needed to be able to come up with answers to quite a few of those questions you see in the letter. So I'd like to thank them for that. That being said, I do ask that the council consider either delaying or denying this amendment. This request is mainly not in opposition for an amendment to have to occur. It's to have an alternative for when the amendment actually does occur. There's an uncertainty of just removing the transportation network altogether and we would prefer to see what the alternative is. And industry hasn't had a chance to respond to a lot of the issues that we have, simply because as we all know, the hospital information is quite new. In fact, we don't have any of the final reports for the hospital information. So we don't know the implications of this amendment. It's not that we're against any of the current reports that have been done, especially with the 107th Ave connection. What the issue is, is what's the alternatives to deal with this? And in my mind, for a comfort level for these landowners, this alternative should be made at the same time as removal of the other one. One of the main concerns that I think these landowners should have is isolation of the land. It's very important for these people to have access to the hospital, as well as 208th Street. And until we know how this can occur, if it can occur, we should think closely about doing any kind of amendment. In answer to Counselor Radburn regarding what the removal of 107th Street access through Gateway, that's the actual issue I have, is, that's my question. What is the implications of removing this connection? We don't have that answer. But to, to enlighten everyone here today is, that's the, that's the issue with and the reason why you do traffic impact analysis. Sometimes road connections, people look at that as now we're adding even more traffic, but that might not necessarily be the case. In some cases, it actually might relieve traffic. And what I mean by that is, people coming through Gateway might actually be trying to get west or north. So they may continue north instead of actually going to 107th Avenue. I don't have that answer. I don't think anyone has that answer at this time, especially because we don't know what the road network is. So again, I would just like to, to state that, you know, representing the landowners is, the major concern, of course, is accesses. And until we have that information, I think we don't have a comfort level to, to support this amendment and we would, would request that council consider either delaying this until some sort of alternative can become, come up with. And I do appreciate Joe Johnson's remarks, if it's been six years. The good news is, and personally, I think, is the hospital is going there now. We know it's going there. We know that design reports have been occurring from other sources. So, you know, it's got to be a matter of time here before people come up with a solution, either industry-driven or even from the city of Grand Prairie.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Ketchum. I see there may be some questions for you. Counselor Rice?
Okay, so you're asking that the public hearing be recessed for a period of, of how long?
Well, I had actually asked that it would be denied until it's brought forth as an amendment with alternatives. But if that's not possible, then recessed.
Okay, thank you.
Like how long, I guess?
I, I don't really have that answer, but, you know, six months?
Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So Ian, think, so when you say six months, is that a period that's maybe doable in terms of developing cooperatively a transportation network for that area? Is that what your hope is? Then we, then we would have something, or you would have something, we would have something to look at?
Yeah, actually, the, the truth of why I can't answer that question is, is because it's out of my control. Some of the delay is, actually all of the delay right now is, we don't have the answers because we don't have the information. I, I'm not sure why and I, I'll leave it to other people to find out, but we don't have the traffic implications from the hospital being implemented. We don't know what kind of traffic volumes the college is talking about. So we can't actually provide anything for our landowners we represent. So when I said six months to Counselor Rice, it's because I actually don't know when we're going to get that information. Until we get that information, I can't give you answers.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So Ian, this might be a tough question for you to answer, but I guess in my mind, there's, there's kind of two alternatives right now. Either we approve the amendments and it basically wipes the slate blank for you to create a network of roads, or we, we kill the amendments or we kill this public hearing and then, is, is it your intentions to, to design based on the existing ASP now? Or are you going to come up with an alternative so, so we can replace that ASP?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question and that actually is one of the major issues we have is, that is true. You can either clean the slate and, and the issue representing these landowners, if I were a landowner there, as soon as you clean that slate, we no longer see any connection from their land to 108th Street. That doesn't mean we, we are saying, yes, 107th Ave will be used for this connection, but what it means is, that's something that we can actually have physical, that we look at and say, there was an intention to have a connection from 116th to 108th Street. Our fear with this amendment is, the land, like I said earlier, becomes landlocked from 108th Street. So you have no access to the hospital and no access to 108th Street. So until that information is, is actually determined, we don't have a comfort level of the amendment.
Right. So from what I understand is you're, the existing ASP, at least in principle, says there's going to be a connection there.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further, Counselor Wong? Okay. Any further questions for the delegation? I'm not seeing any from councilmembers. Mr. Ketchum, I have one. So you mentioned the deficit of information that would enable us to make decisions. So are your landowners contacting the provincial government to express their concern to them as well?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
I think, I know the city of Grand Prairie certainly has written letters to the province expressing our concern about the need to understand the traffic impact of the development. And I guess if I could just pass on, I would hope that all the affected parties, including landlords in that area undertake to do the same. And we would probably aid everybody's case.
Great, thank you. I'll mention that.
Okay. Counselor Radburn?
Are you suggesting that we, yeah, treat all three similarly? Like there's three, right? There's.
There's three ASPs. Western Gateway, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I am suggesting that we don't do any amendments to wipe the slate clean without an alternative, on any of them, without an alternative.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I find it though, you're saying six months, but it's six years and now we're at the hospital. We do have a minister of infrastructure up here now, so I'm sure they could really look into this, the bypass and some other areas. But there's a lot of changes that have happened and six months could turn into another year or two and I think.
Yes.
We're on an issue now where we, I think we're going to have to deal with it before it gets delayed, delayed, delayed. They're putting pollings in the hospital now, so we're kind of, yeah. We do have an infrastructure minister now.
Counselor McLean, was there a question there?
No, just sound off.
Could I answer to that or is it?
Uh, no, actually, we'll save that. This is an opportunity to ask questions of the delegation.
That's right.
And, nope, no concerns. I do have one question for you. Do any of your clients have development that's impending? I guess, because, and the reason that I ask, I understand that there's going to be a high demand and I think it's safe to say this priority for the city of Grand Prairie to see this develop as well. And we're interested in increasing our tax base, definitely. So, but we want to do that so it's functional for the long term. So is it the intent, as far as you know, for any of your clients to proceed with development under the existing transportation network?
It, it's, there is no development that I know of on the land that's shovel-ready for, for certain. I know the intent for landowners in the area because of the hospital is to either be land sellers or to move forward with getting an outline plan in place. The outline plan is the first step you have to take in order to get a subdivision ready for, in, for, for implementation. Because I'm a consultant, I'm representing and I can't answer you like you want to be answered because they could turn the tables on me tomorrow. But speaking on just knowing the industry, when a hospital has started and is in place, anyone in the circumference obviously is going to want to get their land into a position for development. And so the first step is a traffic impact assessment.
Thanks, thanks very much. I appreciate that and appreciate your position and thank you for the reminder of the outline plan. Are there any further questions for Mr. Ketchum or do we let him off the hot seat? Oh, not yet. Counselor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Ketchum, so there's a few gray areas here today if we've, if we've discussed. How does, what are your next steps or how does that, how does, you know, delaying this six months to a year, how's that, how are people able to develop property or how does that affect your, your business, your job to do this, to get this moving forward? Because it's all in our best interest to move it forward, so unfortunately, this might not be the way to go, but, so how do we, how do we move forward in your opinion?
Yeah, to move forward, basically, the very first step is information, transportation and parties. As soon as we know what everyone else is doing in the area, everyone's at a standstill there because the first step that has to be taken, like I mentioned before, is the outline plan, because the area, area structural plan is in place. So the outline plan would be the next step and to do that, you need the information. So regardless of the amendment, truth be told, regardless of this amendment vote today, information transfer is the key to get this area finished. And I, I think Mr. Johnson would agree. It's not like he wants to wipe the slate clean on transportation because it's fun, it's because it doesn't represent what would occur. So, and we, we, we respect that and we understand that, but again, we have to oppose a clean slate that's come back with an alternative. I think we're at the stage where we're close to be able to do that if information is passed on.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchum.
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Mr. Ketchum, thanks very much for being here. Thanks, Ian. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments? I'll call at least one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the proposed amendments? I don't see anyone coming forward. Is there anyone that would speak, would like to speak at all? Anyone in the public that would like to speak at all to the proposed amendments? Final opportunity and I see no one else coming forward, so I. Final opportunity, and I see no one else coming forward, so I close the presentation submission portion.
If there's any consideration of a recess, then we will close.
Oh, thank you very much. So, a note from our Director of Legislative Intergovernmental Services, that if there's any consideration of a tabling, recess, that it needs to be done before closing the public hearing. And so, if there's anybody that would care to have that discussion now, would be the time to do it. Counselor Gustafson?
Before I make that motion, I just want to ask Mr. Johnson the same basic question that I asked Mr. Ketchum, and how does that, how does delaying this or tabling this affect your work? How is, how long is it going to take? Could it take?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. To be quite honest, I don't think we see any utility in delaying the public hearing whatsoever. If, if council is not of the inclination to approve these amendments, then we think that they should just likely be defeated, because there is no work that will be done to support bringing this back at any point, because the same work will occur either way. So, if, I guess, bottom line, we just don't see any use to postponing the public hearing in this instance. Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Mr. McIntyre?
If I may, Mayor Given, where this comes from fundamentally is that planning documents get stale if the development doesn't come along. That's why we do reviews periodically, every five years or so, of major, the MDP and area structure plans, when they've been sitting there, or new information comes along, you know, after, you know, years after the adoption of a plan, that changes your, the direction you need to go in. And this is kind of a classic case, where since before 2005, information came to our attention at the city, that concept, the transportation concept was not feasible. So, whether council approves these amendments or not, we still have the work in front of us to resolve the questions of the transportation in this general area of the city. Our concern at planning staff level is that because the development community, the development sector relies on council's planning, land use planning framework, to make their decisions about where they want to develop next, they put a certain amount of credence in the details of those planning documents, whether it's trunk sewers, or storm water management issues, or where school sites are going to go, and very importantly, traffic. And so, if you leave a document too long, knowing that there's some fundamental flaws in a critical aspect like transportation, it can put some pressure on you as a municipality to entertain and even consider approving a proposal based that's consistent with your planning policy, but you know is not going to work from a practical point of view, or is going to cause some problems for you down the road as additional development comes on stream. So, this is where we were coming from in bringing this to your attention. Now, perhaps, this very step in having this conversation is the most important part of the exercise. We've raised, we've raised a concern with council, the landowners are aware of it, Mr. Ketchum's done a good job of explaining concerns on behalf of those landowners. We are now on record that this is a concern, and perhaps, perhaps that's sufficient, until we actually get the technical work done to resolve a transportation plan for this part of the city. That said, if council's not comfortable with, you know, quote-unquote wiping the slate clean in terms of, you know, notwithstanding the gateway area, or all three areas, then probably the best thing to do is simply defeat them. Otherwise, as Joe indicated, they could be hanging around for a while, and they become almost the proverbial kind of legislative dust bunnies under the city furniture. When we're ready to come back, if you're not happy, if you're not prepared to, you know, approve these today, we'll come back when the time is right, and with a fresh set of bylaw amendments, but there's no harm in, you know, if you're not ready to go forward in defeating them.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Further questions? I see, for administration, I see a few lining up. Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, to administration, if we do defeat the amendments today, I just want to make sure that, you know, if we, if we agree with you that the current ASP would just cause a terrible traffic situation on 107th, are we assured that it's not going to develop that way?
Mr. Johnson?
If you approve the amendments before you tonight, then the only way that you would be back in the same situation you are right now, is if, when we come back to insert a new transportation network, you put back the same thing that you have right now. Hope, it would obviously be with our, in our intention to produce a network that reduces the problems with the 107th Avenue intersection. And so, if I understand your question correctly, if you approve the bylaws tonight, then yes, you are taking a step towards ensuring that you will not have that problem. If you defeat them, then...
I guess the issue I have is, I agree with one big part of the delegation's presentation, and that's to have an alternative to replace the network with. I don't, I think it doesn't help anyone if there is nothing to plan around, and it's really our job to come up with the transportation.
Counselor Wong, do you have a question?
Yeah, so, the question is, is there any middle ground there? Can we, can we make sure that, that there is going to be a connector there, but not the way it's designed?
Mr. Johnson?
Personally, I, I feel that what we have here is actually a middle ground in, in doing that, because it's been suggested by numerous people along this process, that the most appropriate thing to do would be to repeal the entire document. And we thought, nope, there's a lot of good information here, there's land uses, densities, some utility information, storm, everything. The one question mark's transportation, so let's just remove that, rather than throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So, we already felt that this was a reasonable compromise. Yes, it's an ideal situation to remove information and replace it with new information, but the sad reality in this case is, is that we don't have that new information, and we believe that the current information is, is so problematic, that the most, and the likelihood of it occurring is so minimal, everyone truly believes that what will be built is something different than what's shown, then the most appropriate thing would be to remove that from your area structure plan, which is, you know, it's a statutory document adopted by council, so we feel that it is a compromise, and this is a decent middle ground in that regard.
Okay, there are a few others. Counselor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, Joe, I think the delegation is suggesting we treat all three similarly. You've chosen not to do that. Are you trying to find more middle ground, or what's the, what's the deal?
Mr. Johnson?
No, I'm, the reason I pulled the gateway recommendation was due to the fact that it is a different amendment in nature, in that it has the potential to have a limiting factor in the future, whereas the Hidden Valley and Northwest ones do not. There are no limits that we're introducing by having this amendment, whereas the gateway one, we were. And it was all about the, the manner in which I presented the amendments in the newspaper and letters to adjacents and affected landowners and whatnot, in that stating that it is in interim nature, when in fact, that was, I guess, slightly misleading in the gateway case.
Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Any further questions for administration? I have one myself, so I'll give you a chance to think about it. So, for administration, does council have the authority to reject any plans that come forward, I suppose they'd be outline plans, under the existing transportation network that's outlined in the ASP? The reason that I ask, to give the context, is I have a, my concern is, something getting built, that it will be ineffective in the future, or somebody committing dollars in the private sector to building something that the city wouldn't support. And so, do we have the ability to reject that, to ensure that that doesn't happen, for the protection of landowners, the development community, and frankly, for the city? Mr. Johnson?
It's a very good question, Mayor Given. I'm, I'm not 100% sure. The initial thoughts I had off my head is that the statutory doc, or the ASP is a statutory document, and, you know, if, if all other aspects of the outline plan are in conformance with the area structure plan, it'd be very difficult to justify refusing it based on conforming with the area structure plan. However, I guess it is possible, and within council's, I'm not sure, perhaps others in the room may have an opinion on this, I...
Mr. McIntyre, looks like you might have it.
Mayor Given, in my opinion, I think council has ultimate authority to approve an application that's been submitted or applied for under your planning policies. The dilemma could be that someone may be able to make a case that, okay, you have a legal document in effect here, my plan complies with that, or conforms to that. So, then that leaves it to staff to look at it from a technical point of view, and say, okay, upon closer inspection, or given new information, does, does the, is the policy somehow flawed? And obviously, I'm referring to a specific policy component, which would be the transportation, potentially. And the dilemma, from a planning point of view, is that if you can make a technical argument to support a particular concept, and your, your planning framework supports it, it makes it very difficult to, to, to challenge your own policy, and that's, that's, again, what motivated us to bring this forward, that we're not satisfied that this policy component actually is in the interests of the city, therefore, we're suggesting you remove it, and when we have the information to base this, you know, a policy on, then that's the time to, to adopt it, and consider that development, those development proposals that, that you want to kind of follow the policy, as opposed to the other way around.
Okay, I see, Mr. Johnson, you have something else additionally, maybe?
I do have an additional comment, it's not in line with that question, if you don't mind.
Well, this really is the opportunity for council members to ask questions, and I see that there are a few lined up, so I'll go through those first. Mr. Counselor Tool?
I just got a question regarding, the hospital is being built as we speak right now. Where is the roads going to go at this point in time? We've got to come up with a decision here fairly soon. Is there anything in place?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, administration has been working with the province, with the construction of the new hospital, as well as with the college, and there is a site plan, if you will, and I'll just bring it up on the screen here. The red area is the new hospital site, and my very crude graphic shows a road heading north, extending from 110th Street, as well as a connection here, which I believe we are calling 109th Avenue. Yeah, 109th Avenue. And so, there are roads to service the hospital, but the question mark is how, how they tie in with the adjacent quarter sections, and what network they form a part of.
Sure, Counselor Tool?
When are these roads going to be developed?
Mr. Johnson?
They will be developed in conjunction with the hospital. I believe that this, this road on the west side of the hospital will be developed up to a second access point, to allow for two major access points to the hospital, if not the third, because I believe their delivery area is at the far north end of the site. So, I believe most, if not all, of the roads that are crudely shown here will be developed and ready to go the moment the hospital is as well.
Okay, so, this isn't something that's going to happen in the next two years, probably in three?
Approximately at the end of two years, they should be constructed.
I just think we need to be clear, that those roads that you're showing there are relatively fixed, I think, is that, is that correct?
That's right.
Like, in terms of what is flexible and what is not flexible, I think this probably is safer to put these sections into the non-flexible category, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, that was my point as well, thank you very much.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Joe, I really like your administration and city staff of foresight, and you didn't throw the whole structure plan out, you were saying transportation, because you've been hit with a new hospital. And we're looking at 116th Street to the airport, and there could be a connection down the road that way. I, I'm very favorable over your amendments. 107th is already too busy, packed up past the casino, so my question is, I think you've been very good at here, what you brought forward in your amendments, and I look forward to voting on it.
Yeah, I think, I think that wasn't a question, we certainly can, we don't have a motion on the floor at this point, and so the time for debate will be when somebody puts on a motion of any form. Again, this is really a question, a question opportunity for administration, and if nobody chooses to put on a motion to, to recess the public hearing, then, then we move on to closing the public hearing, and either approving the amendments or defeating them. So, Counselor Crook, and I see you in the queue.
Thank, thanks, Mayor Given. Joe, in all of our discussions, which I'm in favor of, majority of them, who's going to be paying for the, for that road that you had proposed, like the 108th, and then in front of the hospital, and a connection to 7th?
Mr. Johnson?
Those will be funded by the province as part of the development of the hospital. All non arterial roads are paid for by the developer, and in this case, the developer is the province.
Thank you very much.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Counselor Rice, for saying about the question. The question, Joe, was, for our infrastructure, and for the provincial government, the hospital's coming, and we're delighted to have it, and we needed it, but it's very important about the transportation. So, we're really looking forward, and I know you made some that they're not going to do anything to bypass it, but I think it's changed what is happening now, so I'm hoping that we can re-look at it with the government and say, look, we have some major issues.
Counselor McLean, I'm sorry, I need to catch you off. Is there, what is your question for administration?
Well, the question is, re-ask the government, can we re-point council to directly look at this?
Okay, so the question is, can council follow up with the provincial government?
Exactly.
On the issue of getting the information that we need?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I think I'll answer that, and say that, that certainly we can, and I think that this can be one of council's advocacy efforts, definitely. Are there any further questions for administration? Counselor Wong?
Mayor Given, is it possible to make a motion for recess?
Yeah, if you'd care to make a motion, then certainly you can do that, that this would be the opportunity to do that, if not, we would move on to closing the public hearing and moving on to voting for or against it.
So, I would move that council recess this public hearing until council meeting on November 26th, which is six months from now. And in speaking to that, Mayor Given, I believe that I would prefer to see alternatives, and it would give Bearstow's leaners and Ketchum an opportunity to provide an alternative to the road network. The other thing is, you know, council only gets a couple of weeks to see these things, and it would be nice for us to be able to mull it over a little bit longer. I know that, for the immediate time, I've only had four days, and all these issues have popped up in the last four days, and I really don't know how I want to go with this. So, six months from now, I don't think it's going to really, really make a difference on the city side of things, and the, the developmental hospital end will be that much further ahead. Maybe we can get some answers to some of these questions that other counselors have.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong, and so that motion to recess the public hearing is in order. It is also date-specific, and certainly appreciate that. So, open for discussion and debate on Counselor Wong's motion to recess the public hearing. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. In Counselor Wong's motion, he indicating that Mr. Ketchum would come up with the alternative, I guess my question is, to administration, is it Mr. Ketchum that would be coming up with the alternative, or is it administration that would be coming up with the alternative?
I think Counselor Wong's motion didn't speak to who is going to be doing the work, but is just strictly on recessing the public hearing, which we're in right now, we're in that sort of formal process, to a date specific, which was November 26th, and through that process, then I think it would be incumbent on everybody to be involved. I don't, so Counselor Wong's motion doesn't say who's going to be doing what.
Okay, I must have misunderstood them.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so it's just, at this, at this point, it's really just saying that council will reconvene in November to make a decision on the recommendations that are in front of us here, which was the quote-unquote wiping the slate clean, removing the transportation network from those area structure plans. network from those area structure plans. But we wouldn't consider that until November. Discussion and debate on Counselor Wong's motion. I'll, if I, Counselor Radman.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I'll be supporting Counselor Wong's motion. I do think this exchange of information is important, so everybody has kind of on the same page in terms of information. Yeah, I think that's a basic reason. I don't think we have a shovel-ready project. We can, we take some time and share information, have parties work together to see what the best transportation network might be. So we have a replacement to the go-back-to-scratch.
Okay, further discussion and debate on the motion to recess. Counselor Gustafson.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm definitely leaning towards Mr. Wong's motion here. So, Mr. Johnson, what, how does this impact?
Sorry, Counselor Gustafson, we're, we're on to, we're on to discussion and debate. So we're talking about the merits of not considering this and leaving the ASPs as they are until November.
So does this, does this stalemate us for six months? We need, we got it, we need a little bit of information to TIA and a few other things like that, but as far as anybody trying to produce a development in that area, does that stalemate them? Does that hold everything up for, like, are we done in that area for six months?
I, I think I heard administration say that our current area structure plans would stay in place with the transportation network that was originally drawn up and has been there for the six years or however long, and that's the information that anybody choosing to proceed with any development would have.
So, for example, if somebody was to produce a fairly substantial development based on what we have in place right now, and in six months we get information saying that we have to change the roads in that area, are we on the hook for any?
I, I think each council member has to decide that within themselves, so I'll say that that was the point of my question earlier on.
Um, I'm just wondering if we could change that to three months possibly? Six months is a little long.
So council members can certainly make motions to amend, and I'll let you maybe consider.
Sure, I'll amend this, amend it three months. Around, put it, I guess we have to pick a date there, council meeting close to three months?
I think administration can probably find the appropriate council meeting, given a few minutes, but, so the intent is three months from today, and I see a calendar up on the computer screen next to me.
August 20th or August 7th?
Okay, so August 20th then, perhaps, would be the, the date that we'd be looking at?
Sure.
Counselor Gustafson? Okay, so Counselor Gustafson is making a motion to amend the motion to recess, to have it be till August.
If I could speak to that for a minute? If we wait six months and, and the administration comes back and says that we have to change it anyways, and we can get that information within three months, you know, we're three months ahead of the game as far as any development in that area.
Okay, okay, so Counselor Gustafson's made a amending motion, and so now discussion and debate, if I could ask it, to be focused on the amendments, whether you'd be support in favor or opposed to the amendment to three months rather than six. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Counselor Gustafson's reading my notes, 'cause I was going to make that suggestion of three months.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I pressed before the motion is made at three months. I'd like to finish it tonight, but if it's three months, I just want to go on another six years, so I look forward to the three months and then be over.
Counselor Wong.
I'm gonna ask that council defeat the motion to shorten that time period. I think the request was for six months, and, you know, administration's been working on this for six years, and I don't think it's really realistic to ask someone to come up with a solution within the next three months, regardless of who's gonna come up with this solution.
Okay, any further discussion or debate on the amendment, three months from six months down to three months? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you much, Mayor Given. If it's possible to get all the information required in three or four or five months, once the information is, is here, could we stall it till then? Do we have to go by a certain date, just because we got a date today, if it shows up in two months?
So you're asking, can, if information comes forward, could this be reconsidered prior to the November 26th date in the original motion? I guess I'd love to administration, I don't, if we're specific about a date, does it hold it until then, or could administration bring it forward?
I believe there would be a process that council would have to go through to make it any earlier, would have to be read advertised. Council would have to come back and make another motion as to, and there would have to be, I think, to bring something back prior to the time, would have to be a two-thirds majority vote.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing that it's possible, but it's a process, and given that administration, yeah, I think, what we heard, it's possible, but it's a process.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or debate? Counselor Gustafson.
I just, you know, I, I, there's a lot of action in that side of town, the hospital's going there, that area is buzzing. I just don't wanna hold it up, so I feel this is, six months is, you know, we're into winter again, and it'll be another long time after that, so I encourage people to vote for the six months and hopefully get this back, three months, and hopefully get this back on the, hopefully get this back on the table so developers can start developing that area.
Okay, any further discussion or debate on the amendment? Seeing none, then I'm gonna call for the vote on the amendment. Now, keep in mind, this is just to change the wording in the original motion from six months down to three months. We're talking about August rather than November. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So we'll move on to voting on the Counselor Wong's original motion as amended, that council recessed the public hearing until now August 20th. So one last opportunity for discussion and debate on that motion. Counselor O'Toole?
If the information does not come back in the three months that we are asking for, can we recess it one more time?
Yes, I believe we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion or debate? If council would allow me, I will be voting against the, the motion. I, my concern is for the city of Grand Prairie and actually for the development community in that area. I'm concerned that the longer that we leave information that may lead people to make false assumptions, or make investment decisions, or planning decisions, under a structure which we know to be flawed, is, is wrong. And so that's why I would support administration's recommendation of owning up to the fact that we know that we have flawed information out there. And I believe that that's what, removing the transportation system from the ASPs would have done. Then everybody is clear that further work needs to be done to come up with the, the appropriate solutions. Thanks very much, council, for your indulgence in letting me have a comment. Any further discussion or debate on, on the motion to recess the public hearing? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Okay, so the consideration of these three bylaws has been recessed till August 20th, and we'll move on to unfinished business, of which we have none, reports which we have none, and that takes us right into committee business. And Counselor Gustafson, I believe you had Public Works Committee was the first one up.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the minutes of the Public Works Committee held May 15th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. And that motion carries. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, was there anything that you cared to highlight from that set of minutes?
Uh, yes, our, our own, our own Michael McIntyre was, gave us a presentation on our, our annexation process. In 2000, council's 2012-2014 strategic plan definitely identifies the need for planning work following annexation of a short-term area. The proposed date right now is January 1st, 2014. With any luck, it might be sooner. Public Works Committee received the staff report May 15th, listing the work the city would need to do once the city boundary is changed to reflect the expanded area of responsibility. The municipal development plan and the land use bylaw would need to be amended immediately to reflect the new city boundary. Master plans needs to be updated. We got the transportation master plan, stormwater master plan, parks and open space master plan, Musquesee master plan. Amendments to area structure plans need to be included, generalizing land use plans for the areas of the IDP to coordinate the, the county to manage growth in the IDP area overall, for the long-term annexation process. Also, amendments, amendments to the intermunicipal development plan in conjunction with the county to reflect the accomplishments of this major joint policy goal. Other updates to our city bylaws, and educating all city and landowners on both sides of the border that are aware of the expanded city boundary. That's all.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. I'm sorry, I'm still on that last public hearing. Did we vote on that set of minutes? Thank you. Counselor Gustafson, I think you had item 9.2 as well, you stepped in on pursuit of excellence for us.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the minutes of the pursuit of excellence committee meeting held May 16th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, Mayor Given, since 1995, $650,000 has been funded, giving away to athletes, coaches, and officials. Ninety-nine scholarships and international scholarships have been given to deserving athletes, and I'm proud to say that Bob and Perky had a great part in spending that $650,000, and without them, their knowledge of the industry, of the athletes, of the community is really good. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. That brings us to the municipal government day team meeting, and Counselor O'Toole, you were chairing that one, I think?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that the council adopt the minutes of the municipal government day team committee meeting held on May 18th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Anything you care to highlight?
Uh, just that we've got a pretty good committee here, it's like we've always had in the past. We've got events starting, entertainment will be starting at four o'clock and ending at approximately 7:00 PM in the amphitheater. The program will include various entertainers, welcomed by Mayor and Counselor Rice, opening of a time capsule, and the presentation of the youth art contest and the amazing race winners. And I understand Mr. Elmer Borsted and yourself will be present when we open up the time capsule, which I think will be a historic moment in Grand Prairie's days.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I see a couple of folks that maybe have some questions or a comment. Counselor Gustafson.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Counselor O'Toole, what year was the time capsule, what do you call it, timed or put away or locked up, or what do you, what time was the time capsule stuffed, or?
It was in the 60s, correct? 62?
I, I believe it was under a stone that said 61, but wasn't placed until 62. The construction started on that city, town, city hall in 1961 and was completed in 1962, and they laid the, the time capsule in 1962.
Oh, thank you, that'd be cool.
Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wanna say to Counselor O'Toole, I hope that day of Miss Montgomery Day shines on you with lots of sun.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get the sun, suntan lotion out that day.
Counselor Rice?
Do we know if the pool's gonna be open? Bear Creek Pool's gonna be open?
I'm gonna have to ask Mr.
Mr. Roth, do you have an answer to that for us?
Actually, I'm not aware if it is or not. I'm, we can make some inquiries.
Okay, thanks very much.
I guess, other than that, I just wanna encourage everybody to go down and take advantage of the free transit and save a parking problem.
So just a comment on Counselor Rice's question, we were trying to get the pool open, and that pool, if it was open, would be free access that day. We were just wondering if the conditions were gonna be great, and we haven't got a word on that yet.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then if there's nothing further, we'd move on to item 9.4 in the Protective Services Committee, and Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held May 22nd, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong, do you wanna carry on from there?
Yes, I move that council replace the current fees for criminal record checks, bylaw C-1124, with the new police services fee and charges, bylaw C-1267. And in speaking to that, Mayor Given, this new bylaw has additional fees on it that we didn't charge for prior, but other municipalities are charging for it, so our, our CMP felt that it should be included in our, in our bylaw. I'm just gonna see what the additional fees are. Things like additional copies of your motor vehicles collision report, confirmation of occurrence to insurance solicitors, fingerprinting and photographs of, of accidents and things like that. So those weren't included before, it was just strictly police information background checks.
Point of order, don't we have to do three readings of the bylaw?
Thanks very much, we're just having that discussion here, and so we're actually rescinding one bylaw, and then we'll need three readings to, to put in a new bylaw, and so Counselor Wong.
I will make the motion for first reading.
Just half a second more.
It's included, so we just need the three readings.
Okay, so, thanks very much. So included in the new bylaw is a point that actually rescinds the previous bylaw, so it's just the three readings of the, of the new bylaw.
So I'll move first reading of bylaw C-1267, police service fees and charges.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. So motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I'll move second reading of bylaw C-1267, and I have already provided background information on that.
Okay, open for discussion and debate on second reading. Opportunity for discussion and debate for any council members. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I move that council consider having third reading of bylaw C-1267.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. So motion to have third reading here tonight must carry unanimously in order for council to move on to having third reading and finalizing the bylaw here at this council meeting. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having a third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, so we can have third reading if Counselor Wong would, or somebody would care to make a motion to that effect?
I move a third reading of the new police services fees and charges bylaw C-1267.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong, and I know you have a number of other items of business on your agenda.
Yes, I'm gonna move that council approve revised policy 803, fire department level of service. And I believe I do that one before I repeal the, the other policy. So in speaking to this new policy, this, this is for the opening of the third fire hall. The old level of service included a minimum staffing level of four. The new one is, asks for a minimum staffing level of six, and that would allow, if one fire department were busy, that there would still be six firefighters on staff to man the city. It also talks about, or it maintains, or looks for reaffirmation of the five-minute driving time policy. So I know that our, our fire department doesn't go with response time, it goes with travel time, as, similar to other cities. The NFPA standards actually ask for response time, but our staff felt that it, it can cause issues on its own, because it, there are safety concerns when firefighters try to rush to, to get to, to the, to the point of where to connect the, the fire hose, and they can, in just trying to make that time, cause accidents. So the five-minute travel time is still greater than some other cities. Cities like Calgary, for example, have a four-minute travel time requirement. We're right in the, we feel that we're in a good zone for a municipality of our size.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? And just to be clear, this motion- just to be clear, this motion, because it's policy, we can rescind one and add the new one all in one motion. So any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
Thank you. And seeing as I didn't make the motion all at once, I'll move that council repeal policy 801, fire department staffing levels, previous.
You're just determined to get as many motions tonight as you can, eh? Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Appreciate that, that in that first motion you hadn't included that. And so I'm sure that we get it. So any discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think the policy 801, we're exceeding our level of size of city with firemen. So I think we're doing very good there. And I spoke about being fiscal responsible for the taxpayers of the city of Grand Prairie. And I think now we have three file halls under our mortgage. So I look forward to them doing a great job in the future. And I think we're there now.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
I move that council request the mayor to write letters to the Minister of Human Services and the Minister of Municipal Affairs opposing amendments to the legislation allowing 24-hour work shifts. And in speaking to this, administration felt that increasing work shifts to allow for 24 hours is kind of counterproductive to the occupational health and safety principles within the city. It does create increased possibility of people making mistakes. There's also the health aspect. People working 24-hour shifts tend to get sick more often and things like that. The ministers were looking for feedback from municipalities, and that's what this letter would be. It's just to advocate for, or advocate against the 24-hour work shifts.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The other part of this was that the administration felt that that could increase operational costs too, which would be another negative in terms of having to backfill more often, bring officers back to cover. So I think both for health and safety and operational costs, I certainly support this motion.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
I move that council support the submission of a resolution for improving policing, crime prevention, and community safety services in Alberta to the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. And in speaking to this, Mayor Given, this is an AUMA resolution that we're putting forward that would basically ask the province to increase police funding by asking every municipality that gets police services to contribute a little bit. It wouldn't necessarily change what the city of Grand Prairie contributes, but it would allow additional pool to be created, to be put into things like crime prevention and improving policing and things like that. And police funding is becoming more and more critical. It's very difficult to come by. So I'm just going to ask that all members of council support this motion.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The other thing that I think is important with respect to our resolution is that it speaks to encouraging improvements in dealing with top priority issues as it relates to improving policing, crime prevention, and community safety services. So it's not just about funding. It's about using those funds in each of those areas to increase and improve safety and security of our residents. So I like that part of it too. It's not just necessarily just the policing, it's crime prevention and other programs to add to safety and security. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Wong?
I move that council appoint Timothy Rochon, Mary O'Parody, Kathleen Miller-Latandra, Judy Freeburn, and Amy Kout as pest inspectors according to the provisions of the Agricultural Pest Act for a term from April 30th, 2012 to April 30th, 2013. And in speaking to this, Mayor Given, this is something that we have to do on an annual basis. We do have to appoint pest inspectors.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Rice?
What kind of pests? I can't imagine we have a lot of agricultural pests living in the city.
This is one of the reasons why Alberta has maintained its rat-free status. We do have to have pests inspectors. I believe, well, I could use a little bit of help from administration just to see what other kind of agricultural pests they'd be looking for.
Actually, this, if you will, covers off tree pests and other pests that may have to be dealt with under the, I don't know what act that is, but certainly Jim Donley and the gang look at this as part of their game as well.
I'll also give our acting city manager a shot at this too, since he hasn't had too many chances to use his mic today. Ms. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for primarily pests under the Agricultural Pest Act, primarily focuses on rats and other related species.
We don't have any.
From time to time, city administration does end up dealing or handling complaints of animals of that nature, whether they're found it or not. And this certainly gives them the legal authority to investigate those types of concerns.
But do we need five people to deal with pests we don't have?
Ms. Roth?
Your worship, I think I'm not in that particular service area, but I do know that that's still accommodate for the various scheduling. So somebody, the right person's working, somebody with authority is working at any given time.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much. Councilor Wong?
Yeah, I was just going to clarify that. It's important to note that this isn't their only job. This is another appointment along with their existing duties.
That's right. These are already peace officers or bylaw enforcement officers, and we're giving them additional authority under this provincial act.
Councilor Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just noticing in the recommendation that it's April 30th, 2012 to April 30th, 2013. Wouldn't it not be May 1st? I mean, I don't know how important that is, but.
I think we're taking the administration's recommendation from the committee. So they're less one day. We'll make sure to bring it back one day earlier.
Isn't it the province's year end?
Could be. Okay.
A year and a day.
Okay, Councilor McLean?
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. This is to Councilor Rice. You may not remember, it was back in the 90s. There was an individual that had a couple of rat pets that they said they were both female, but it turned out they were male and female, and there were Norwegian rats. That could produce quite a few rats, so. That was back in the 90s.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion or debate? Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, so we can move on from the pests. Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks very much. Councilor Wong, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
No, thank you. I would be happy to let off the hook.
You've made your way out of the trap, so to speak. That'd move us on to general government services. And Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held on May 22nd, 2012, with the revision in 4.3, motion 4.3 should be 2013 budget deliberation process.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. So one note for revision to that set of minutes. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you. I would move council approve revised policy 306, interest on refund of taxes, comma revised policy 305, prepayment of local improvement taxes, comma revised policy 323, investment policy, comma and revised policy 308, council and employee reimbursement, and rescind policy 307, loans or guarantees to organizations external to the city. Speaking to this motion, this was a recommendation that came from the City Policy Review Committee. And the short two, couple of sentences on each of them was included in our committee package that I would hope that council had took a look at.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council adopt revisions to policy 339, including the name of the reserve to the facility renewal reserve. I guess this policy talks about reviewing the reserves to ensure city is setting money aside for purposes consistent with the council's strategic plan. In this particular case, we're changing the name from the, I think it used to be called Facility Depreciation Reserve, but we're calling Facility Renewal Reserve. And it's important because it speaks to the replacement, the eventual replacement of municipal, municipality physical assets. And it speaks to trying to find a balance in terms of putting some monies aside on an annual basis, so that that burden is, I guess, is borne by those that are presently using facilities and those who would benefit in the future. So it speaks to, by putting away the amount of depreciation, the city will strike a balance between requiring current taxpayers to get to set aside for the buildings they're using now and the future taxpayers who will benefit of a new facility. Policy change will clarify the funding to be held for the future maintenance, renovation, and replacement of city facilities. And really, we're putting money equal to the depreciation. And in this case, present case, it was 4.6 million. So we are putting some monies away for future capital assets.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Discussion or debate on the motion? Councilor Rice?
I guess I'm kind of perplexed. We have a whole committee called the Policy Review They're supposed to be looking at these industry, but we have, you know, going off and doing this without going through that committee, I, why would we bother? Why don't you just kill off the Policy Review Committee if you're just going to go helter-skelter?
To speak to that, at minimum, my memory is that the first three all went through the Policy Review Committee. This one, if it didn't go through, and I'm just looking to administration, I don't remember if the tangible capital assets did go through Policy Review, or sorry, Facility Renewal Reserve. I don't remember if it went through Policy Review Committee, and maybe Ms. Solve can enlighten us there. But if it didn't, it certainly does make up a part of the city's fiscal sustainability framework that we're working to develop. And so the Policy Review Committee is looking at the stuff that we've already got, and it's done that. And that's where the first three motions came from. This is a significant reworking to meet council's goal of developing a fiscal sustainability framework. And that's why it went through committee.
Correct. But we're rescinding a policy. 307.
Yes.
That was all the first motion, and they, and our understanding was that they all went through the committee. It's just this policy 339 that didn't, and it is to do with fiscal sustainability model work.
Yeah, if, yeah, so Councilor Rice in item 9.5.1, policy 305, 306, 307, 308, and 323, all were reviewed at the Policy Review Committee. So that was the Policy Review Committee is doing exactly what it was. It gave advice to administration. Administration brought that advice forward to GGS, and then it's here tonight. So.
Yep.
For the Director of Intergovernmental Services?
I think perhaps just to clear up, just to clarify, the process for the Policy Review Committee is that that committee is not necessarily recommending policies directly to council. However, they are directing administration to make changes to policies, which administration will then bring forward through to council through the appropriate standing committee. So that's just to clarify, it's a bit different process than many of our other committees of council.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so we're on 9.5.2, the Facility Renewal Reserve. Any further discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn?
Thank you. And finally, yeah, I guess just a quick comment. Councilor Rice and who else? Councilor Wong are on the committee? They're doing, and yourself, Mayor Given. So really appreciate the work that the committee is doing. And I think that we're finding action happening with respect to the work of the Policy Committee, and I appreciate that. It's been excellent. Final motion I have is that council approve policy 351, tangible capital assets as presented. This policy, again, it was, this policy outlines the specific guidelines related to the types of physical equipment to be included as an asset on the financial statement, the value of that equipment, and its estimated useful life to the city.
Thank you. Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Any discussion or debate? Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radburn, anything to highlight from that set of minutes?
Actually, yeah, we, yes, Mayor Given.
You don't have to sound so apologetic.
Yeah, that was the word, yeah. We talked about a number of things. And we approved a VIC amended agreement with Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association. We just changed the date of the start of the peak time in that contract. So it was fairly minor. It was a couple of weeks, and it reflected when staff could be hired and trained. So that was fairly minor. We did, the boring bylaw that Don brought back was referred to the fall budget discussions. And because it dealt with trying to match, Don will help me if I'm correct, but trying to match the number or the actual adventure we need versus what was in the capital plan. And at the end of the day, we chose not to proceed with that, feeling that we should go back to the citizens kind of one more time when it's all in, so to speak, when we know what our shortfall in funding, local funding program gleaned us. And secondly, when we've talked about how we're going to cover that shortfall, because there are different options for council as to what, how that shortfall is covered. And so let's make those decisions so that we have one last time to clean that up. And then another policy, just a little bit on service fee. We're just asking for a little twinking there and enhancing. And we did, Councilor Rice will be pleased to note, we did receive the first quarter financials that showed that we would have estimated $150,000 surplus at year end. But as we are well aware, things will change as we move through the quarters. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. We'll move on to Environment Committee and Councilor Monroe.
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held on May 23rd, 2012.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks again, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the submission of the revised resolution on increased fee schedule for abandoned vehicle disposal in Alberta to Alberta Municipal, Alberta Urban Municipalities Association.
Thanks very much. Did Councilor Rice punch you in the shoulder when you got the name wrong?
I could hear her groaning there. Just to speak briefly to that, by the way, Mayor Given, is it's been many years. As a matter of fact, the last time that the fee schedule for the removal of abandoned vehicles was looked at was when I was 10. So that was back in 82. Anyways, the funds are really not adequate to cover off abandoned vehicles, cover off the towing and the storage of abandoned vehicles. And abandoned vehicles really are quite a problem in the city of Grand Prairie, and as administration tells us, in other communities as well, too. I believe that last year, we were averaging almost 500 per month in abandoned vehicles. And we had, I believe, 1,200 towed altogether last year. And it really is difficult trying to get the tow companies and the storage yards to take on these tasks, because there just really isn't payment enough for it. So it really is a difficult thing to deal with. So I would encourage everyone to vote in favor of this. I think that it's one of those fee schedules that is long overdue for review. And I think it could help, I guess, encourage people not to use the city as a disposing ground for their abandoned vehicles.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, Council Monroe?
Certainly, just a couple of quick items. Administration came back to us in regards to some beautification projects, in particular, the wrapping of utility boxes. They've identified that there's enough funds in place to wrap 10 utility boxes as kind of a pilot project in the city. So they are going to come up with a theme and, I guess, a neighborhood to pick where we can attempt that. So I'm quite excited about that, and the cost's actually seemed quite reasonable. We were told that they were approximately about $150 per utility box. And once again, if it takes off, maybe we can see even more next year.
Or dinosaurs.
Anyways. And then we did get a brief update on the city scrub that took back, took place back in the beginning of May. Huge success again this year, and just a big thank you to everyone that participated in the Rotary Greenathon, the city scrub. It was a week of intensive city cleaning, and, you know, when we see a day like today out there, and it's not as dirty as what it was, every little bit counts. So thanks off to everyone that helped out with beautifying our city.
Thanks very much, Council Monroe. We had, that finishes our committee business, and we had no items of correspondence. I have the note right there, 9.7.1 to 9.7.6, and then 9.8, right there in front of me. Councilor Gustafson, would you like to handle the items from the special public works meeting this afternoon?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yesterday, we had a special public's work meeting. And at the end of these six motions today, if they're all approved, you will be investing over $10 million of new infrastructure to our inventory of transportation utilities. So we'll start off with the, council, I move council award tender T. 4155212 for the 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program, rehab sites to Wapiti gravel suppliers, division of NPA Limited, in the amount of $3,741,749.59 excluding GST. As a tender meeting, the city specifications and that funding be allocated from the 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. This is coming forward from a special public works meeting. I'm imagining, due to the fact that council is away at FCM, and obviously, we want to ensure that we hit the construction season this year, so we're giving approval to these tenders so that work can proceed. Council Gustafson?
All these are scheduled to be weather permitting completed this year, so.
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Council Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council award tender T. 4655212 for the 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program, Site 1, 84th Avenue and Wapiti gravel suppliers, division of NPA Limited, in the amount of $2,662,487.18 excluding GST. As a tender meeting, the city specifications and that funding be allocated from the 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate, questions or comments on the motion? Council Wong?
Are we overpaying for this one? I think I heard him say $487.18 instead of $467.
Catch, Council Wong, Council Gustafson, did you want to throw in that extra 20 bucks out of your own pocket? Maybe we'll just, were you okay with correcting that motion as it was in the?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll accept that as a friendly catch. Council, Council McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I look forward to this one, and all of them, actually, but this one, it goes from No Frills to Safeway. I do believe that's the one we're talking about, and it's really become a busy area, so I look forward to being finished.
I'm surprised there wasn't a Tim Hortons in that stretch, Council McLean. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Council Gustafson?
If I spend $10 million today, and I'm only 20 bucks out, that's not so bad. I move the council award tender T. 3355212 for the 2012 Sidewalk Program to Raider Site Services Limited, in the amount of $1,513,190 excluding GST. As a tender meeting, the city specifications and that funding be allocated for the 2012 Sidewalk Program.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Council Gustafson?
Thank you. I move council award tender T. 3455212 for the 2012 Trail Construction to Wapiti gravel suppliers, division of NPA LTD, in the amount of $612,613.47. As a tender meeting, the city specifications and that the funding be allocated from this new sidewalk and pathway program, the pathway rehab program, and the Jubilee Park sidewalk program.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Council Gustafson, you've only got a few more roads left to pave in Grand Prairie.
I move council award tender T. 4255212 for the 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program, overlay sites to Canals and Rock Products, in the amount of $1,216,918.83 excluding GST. As a tender meeting, the city specifications and that funding be allocated from the 2012 Road Rehabilitation and Overlay Program.
Thanks very much, Council Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Council Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the council award tender T. 3555212 for the 2012 East Link Center South Parking Lot to Wapiti gravel suppliers, division of NPA LTD, in the amount of $641,415.64 as a tender meeting, the city specifications, and that funding be allocated from the East Link South Parking Lot Program, and that $100,000 in additional funding be allocated from the future expenditure reserve. The, in speaking to this, the finish date for this at our new East Link Center is proposed to be July 31st.
Excellent. Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson, for handling all that extra business and kicking off construction season in the city of Grand Prairie. Now we had item 9.8, Council Redburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Boy, Alex, when you knew it was going to come out of your pocket, you made sure your
Exact.
That's right. By policy, council has to formally approve sponsorship requests of over $2,000. We have one to bring forward tonight. And so I would move the council approved sponsorship to the Royal Canadian Legion for Remembrance Day services in the amount of $6,100. This has been, in speaking to it, it's been typical, this has been the amount we've supported the ceremonies for the last number of years, and council certainly felt, well, council will decide, I guess, ultimately, but the recommendation was that we should be consistent and continue that support. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and the city's continued sponsorship of the Remembrance Day Services at the Crystal Center will go forward for another year. Thanks very much, Council Redburn. Council McLean, did you have a question, comment?
I just had one, Mayor Given. I just wanted to know, with all the construction going on for the major capital this year, is there going to be a map? I know they can get on to the internet, an engineering service, but in the paper, actually, where everything is happening? Because I think the city.
Actually, as a matter of fact, the city of Grand Prairie and its City Matters newsletter, that's the centerfold. That's where all the, all the action is, is in the center of the City Matters, the latest issue of City Matters, which has been distributed through the Daily Herald Tribune, through the newspaper, as well as through their flyers that the carriers take around as well, so.
A lot of people don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Thank you very much for highlighting that. Much appreciated. If there was no further business from committee business that I'd missed, then we'd move on. We had no items of correspondence. We did have two delegations, and probably would be appropriate to, at minimum, receive for information, the presentation from Alberta One Call, if somebody cared to make that motion. Council Rice?
I move that we receive the information and the presentation of the shovel from Alberta One Call for information.
Thanks very much, Council Rice.
I don't know if you can receive a shovel for information, but.
I'm not sure how we'll file it. We'll have to see if we can fit it into the cabinet. But certainly appreciate that, and I think it'll be an honor to be able to use that the next time the city does a sod turning for anything. Certainly a good public service reminder. Thanks very much, Council Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And our other public delegation was the Pursuit of Excellence renaming. And now those aren't, those scholarships are not named by council policy. It could have been done administratively, I believe, to change those. So we don't need to make a motion to do that. So I guess I'm kind of at a loss whether we need to receive that for information. I think that really the presentation was the business, and so I don't think there's any action arising out of that. We had no notices of motion, and so we'd go to council member reports from agencies, boards, and commissions. And Council Redburn, you said you had Grand Spirit Foundation?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick report on the May 18 Management Committee meeting. We, Grand Spirit had an external health and safety audit completed. We're waiting for the final report, but the post-audit review was very positive. Well-rose manor skylights, we're looking at repairs, and we're seeking provincial help for those repairs. We reviewed and adjusted mileage rates. Amis Court capital costs are being finalized with the province. And we're looking at expanding a contract with a private operator who is helping with rent supplement affordable housing for seniors. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Redburn, for that update. If there were no other reports from council members, from agencies, boards, and commissions, then we'd move on to council roundtable, and we start with Council McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On May 21, I attended a stomped parade with my children, my wife. And it was actually a lot bigger than what people thought, and it was very good. On May 22, I had my one-on-meeting, one-on-one meeting with Greg, went very well. On May 20, also on May 22, I attended the stomped bust-out brunch. And you'll probably hear a lot about stomped, but I want to say hats off to Birdie Benson, who works for the city, that takes, I believe, a week of her vacation time for a stomped every year. May 24, I also attended the Western Air Rescue Hangar, and this was for EMS Awareness Week, which takes place May 21 to May 26. It's honoring the EMS profession and recognizing the importance of EMS by raising overall public understanding and awareness of how EMS serves our Alberta communities. Western Air Rescue would like to honor their flight medics who provide air ambulance for the last nine years, and they helped save my family when they flew my wife when she was pregnant with our children, and then flew them back from Royal Alex. Because any children born under 32 weeks in certain situations get flown out of here quickly. So on May 24 as well, I attended the grand opening of the Petro-Canada Truck Stop, and there was a check presentation given to Stomped Association there, I believe around $10,000. And I didn't realize how big this truck stop was until I actually went in there. And it's quite a big area. As well, I attended the grand opening of the Third Fire Hall. The timing, timing is everything they say on this, for the building was very good, because the price is right, it was just over $6 million, and bang for the taxpayers' dollars, it worked out good. And it shall serve the West area very well for many years, I believe, well, long after a lot of us are gone. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Council Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On May 15, I participated in Chair Leaders Day, along with Mayor Given, Council Kevin O'Toole, and a few city staff, Lisa Watson, Kathy Shepherd, and Cheryl McKenzie. We were, given our wheelchairs at 9:00 AM on that Tuesday, attended a public works meeting, had lunch at the Stanford Inn, at which point we were transported to and from there, from the Disabled Transportation Society, who did an excellent job moving us back and forth, and then back to our respective places of work, and then back to City Hall. And I'd have to say that it was an eye-opening experience. You never look at a confined space or the level, the grade on the ground, or bumps on the ground, the same ever again, because you know what a struggle it is to have to move through that stuff. I wanted to thank Mika DeGroot and her staff from the Canadian Paraplegic Society for allowing us to have that opportunity. It was a unique experience, and I would encourage other members of council to try that, try that next year when they have that again. On May 16, I was at City Hall for a tender opening for the Road Rehab Program. May 22, the stomped bust-out brunch and proclamation reading. May 23, I attended the council workshop on science-based environmental reserve. May 25, at the grand opening of the West Gate Fire Hall. And I have to say that it's just a fantastic facility, and it's going to offer our fire department some unique training experiences, so we're not going to have to send guys out anymore. They're going to be able to do that right in Grand Prairie. On the evening of May 25, I attended the Compostet High School graduation and gave greetings on behalf of mayor and council. I wanted to give kudos to their valedictorian, Sam Lowe, who did just an excellent speech. It was really inspiring and a most amazing performance. It was the most unique thing I'd ever seen. And I'm really grateful for the fact that I didn't have to follow that act, because he got a standing ovation, and he would have got a standing ovation anywhere in this world. I also just want to say a couple of thank yous and congratulations. Congratulate the 490 runners that were registered for the press run last Saturday, it's record attendance there, and thank the volunteers for putting on such great quality events in our city. And I also wanted to thank Generations Church for the gift baskets that they give all members of council, and the notes of thanks attached to them. Speaking on behalf of all members of council, I'd like to say that it was really appreciated to have those kind words in a note, and the gift baskets were excellent. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Council Wong. Council Rice?
Echo Council Wong's sentiments to Generation, really appreciated it. I attended the Northern Alberta Eye Institute and Peace Lasik Center opening, a world-class facility, absolutely phenomenal. What, I guess, congratulations to them and HWD Construction, that facility is just incredible. So I think it will be a huge asset to the community. On Wednesday morning, I will be making a presentation to the Regulated Review Committee on electric prices. My presentation will primarily focus on urging them to keep the regulated or default rate to help control the volatility of the market.
Thanks very much, Council Rice. Council Monroe?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On May 17, I had a meeting with Bruce Rutley from the CRI, and Dan DeBilt with Prida, who is the new executive director there. He's been in, been in that position now for about, I guess, about four months or so now, and seems to be getting up to speed on a lot of the issues there, and looking forward to future meeting, meetings with them. On the 25th, I also attended the grand opening of the Third Fire Hall, and once again, just echo everyone's comments, that it's quite a fantastic building, although the main attraction for the councilors seem to be the fire pole. And interesting to see them, and of course, our city manager attempting to climb it. And then on the 25th as well, I did a tender opening for the East Link Parking Lot, which we saw come to, come to the meeting here tonight. And of course, thank you to the Generations Church for the gift basket. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Monroe. Council Kogan?
Thanks, Mayor Given. On May 8, I opened some of those various tenders that my colleague here approved. On the 22nd, I attended also the really nice and wet bust-out stomped brunch and proclamation by yourself. Real big thank you to Wapiti Sand and Gravel, they got a new logo with their barbed wire on there. I hope that's a good thing. And I'd also like And I'd also like to thank Bernie Benson, she really did a great job on the whole, the whole week, especially reminding us where we were supposed to be. On the 23rd, I had, I was volunteering selling tickets at the Cashford Camping for the Friends of the Grand Spirit Foundation. Later on, the 23rd, I enjoyed the rather damp time out at the tech center, 5:00 PM in the mud, I gave away a bike in the kids' calf scramble, they call it. It was pretty exciting. Nobody got hurt, but everybody got a little dirty, and so did I. But it was, it was a lot of fun, the kids really enjoyed that, and they liked the bike. It went to, mine went to Sherwood Park, I believe. On the 24th, I also attended the Petro-Canada grand opening with the stomped flair, of course, with all the stomped gals, that was really nice. Later on, that lunch, there was a quandary, there was three launches that one day, so I ended up going to that launch. The lineup was too long, I went to the next launch, which was Better Homes and Gardens, the grand opening of the new real estate company in town, and I was a little late for that launch, but anyway. Congratulations to Bev Dewees and crew. On the 25th, while you were all sliding up and down poles, I was judging Miss Rodeo's speech competition at the jackpot, I just felt so sorry for you folks. And that was very good at the jackpot. On 26th, I attended the pancake breakfast at the Co-op, and that had the stomped flair with all the gals there again. And thanks to the Generation Church, that chocolate put me right over the top, that was just excellent. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks very much, councillor Kogan. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I met with our city manager, Greg Sherback, for our quarterly, quarterly meetings. I joined the mayor for his proclamation at Duke's. We had a homecoming subcommittee meeting. I was at the presentation about the municipal reserve wetlands, and was very, very educating on how to improve and our wetlands and make them usable space, or more usable space. I was able to attend the AGM for the Grand Prairie Minor Hockey here in Grand Prairie at the Coke Center. Approximately 800 children in the association, and they all play hockey. There's a few members, there's a few new members on the board, and I wish them all the best in their upcoming year. And I attended the Third Fire Hall grand opening, thanks to Generations Church for their words of encouragement. And I attended on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie, the Grand Prairie Stomped, and gave away the bike at the calf scramble. Very exciting, very, very neat seeing all them kids chase a little calf around, and you've got to give them credit, because I don't think I could catch it. And at the stomped as well, Saturday, they estimated the population of over 10,000 peoples were out, 10,000 people were out at the tech center and the stomped grounds, enjoying the festive events that we have out there. So congratulations to the Grand Prairie Stomped Committee for another great year and all their hard work. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, councillor Gustafson. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. May 17th, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association had a board governance workshop, and later that day, I attended the Crime Prevention Week displays at the Eastlake Center. And actually, that evening, I read the proclamation for the International Day Against Homophobia. May 19th, no, May 22nd, stomped bust-out brunch and proclamation. May 23rd, the Environmental Reserve Workshop, and I joined Alex at the Grand Prairie Minor Hockey Annual Meeting. They had asked a couple of councillors to come and count ballots. So if you're answering the question about how many councillors it takes to count ballots, you know, two. May 24th, I brought council greetings at the unveiling of the Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate franchise, and congratulations also to Bev and Brian Dewees. They've moved from exit realty to Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate and have adopted that brand. Very exciting. I want to also thank David and Brian. David and Brian put together some information with respect to our economic growth in the city that was very well received by those locals who were there, and also the president and vice president of Better Homes and Gardens Real Estate for Canada. May 25th, I went to the opening of the West Gate Fire Hall as well. May 26th, I read the proclamation at the farmer's market for the Day of the Honeybee. And May 27th, I also presented a bike at the stomped for the calf scramble, thanks, Alex. And also wanted to just thank on May 26th, Lucy Ramirez, helped with, with the proclamation of the honeybee, and so appreciate her support and help. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you much, Mayor Given. On May 15th, I was also in a wheelchair for the day as a chairleader. Like councillor Wong had suggested, it was a real eye-opener. Simple task like crossing the street, going through a door, getting back on the curb and using the washroom, are tasks that we take for granted as able-bodied people, and being put in a situation like that for a few hours was really overwhelming. I chose to go to the gun club, something that's really dear to me, and wheel around out there, and to see what kind of difficulties it would be, and I tell you, I had to cheat a little bit, because going through gravel and sand is not something that a wheelchair, I think, is made to do. Pardon me? Yeah, I needed to whistle a couple times. On May 17th, I attended a local residence, he has a wind energy power generation turbine on his, on his farm, and we, I was joined with Mayor Given and a few people here from City Hall, and we looked at that and experienced another eye-opening experience where we thought it would be a little bit louder, quite a clumsy-looking machine, and something that probably wouldn't be too acceptable by the public. No guarantees here, but it was a good eye-opening experience. We may see some of them in the commercial or residential areas of this town, possibly in the future. On May 18th, I went to the gun club with the Rotary Exchange students that were here for the last little while. There were seven people I took out to experience handling firearms. One individual was from Turkey, one from Thailand, and one from Germany. There were some local people from Grand Prairie that were exchange students in the past, and it was an experience that they had never been able to experience in their homelands, and so they were quite overwhelmed with that as well. And on the 21st, I attended the stomped parade with my wife and grandchildren. On the 22nd, I attended the stomped bust-out and listened to some good entertainment and ate some good grub. On the 24th, I attended the Petro-Can travel stop and sponsorship presentation, and I was able to be joined with Miss Rodeo Canada and Miss Tepee Creek and Miss Stomped, and a couple of the up-and-coming possible Queen representatives. And Mayor Bill Given and I were able to have our lunch with them. It was a good evening, good day. Shortly after that, Western Air Rescue had their open house as well, and just to give you a little heads up on what Mayor, or councillor McLean had said, there's over 6,000 missions in the Peace River, Grand Prairie area that they have done in the last 10 years, and I think that's just an awesome statistic. On the 25th, I attended the West Gate New Fire Hall, and then went to the stomped. I took my dad, that's been in the hospital for the last 13 weeks, out for a couple hours to enjoy the rodeo, and took them back home. He was still talking about it as of yesterday. After that, I returned to also watch the chuck wagons and give out the bike that the city sponsors at the calf scramble. On the 26th, I went to Wembley, and Mayor Given was joined with me, and we went to the vintage tractor parade.
I just want to be, I just want to be clear that we were not physically joined together. I also attended at the same event, is what I think it is. We were not joined.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. No, it wouldn't. So let's play those words over again. I attended, and so did Mayor Bill Given, the vintage tractor parade. There was 38 tractors in all, that was led by Honorable Wayne Drysdale and MLA Everett McDonald, and also Mayor Given was right up there near the front, and I was towards the middle. But it was quite unique to see 38 tractors that were probably 40 years old or older going down the road, and we had a lot of support from the town of, or village of Wembley. And later that day, I was able to attend and give the opportunity to be the reviewing officer for the 2850 Royal, Loyal Everton Regiment Royal Canadian Army Cadets. It was one of the highlights of being a councillor so far this year. There is six sub-regiments that belong to this regiment, and the, this Grand Prairie detachment or regiment was awarded the best of the six, and it's the first time in about 25 years. So there was a, it was a surprise to them, they didn't know about that till about two minutes before the presentation. There was other awards given out to different members of the Army Cadets. I won't go into detail, but it was a very highlighted year for those. They went to Jasper, they spent some time in Vimy Ridge, and they are going to be going to camp for approximately six weeks during the summer. So there's a lot of cadets out there, and on average, there's 44 that attend weekly sessions. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. Certainly appreciate that council members have been busy over the last while, as we get into stomped season and the summer barbecue season obviously gets very busy. Summer barbecue season is especially busy for councillor Kogan. So I'll try to be brief in my, my comments. On May 15th, I was also, took part for the second year in the Chair Leaders Event, and thanks very much to the organizers of that. May 16th, I attended to help start some of the planning for the 75th anniversary of the AMA's School Patrols program. I was a patroller back in the day in my days at Swan Even, and there's no feeling like the feeling of power that you get when you have a wooden stop sign in your hand as a grade six student. But the AMA, sorry, the AMA is going to be celebrating that 75th anniversary this fall, and so would encourage the community to look out for that. They are going to be seeking people who were patrolers, and so if there's anybody around this table who was a school patroller back in the day, make sure to let the AMA know they're going to be collecting stories of people who were school patrolers. I also attended the demonstration of the wind turbine, and as councillor O'Toole highlighted, that was an eye-opener and an ear-opener for me, in the fact that it was actually very, very quiet. I certainly will be advocating for the wind energy to be considered in the city's new land use bylaw. I also attended that evening at the International Day Against Homophobia, and I want to thank councillor Radburn for taking over on short notice to read the proclamation when I had to depart. On May 20th, I had the pleasure of attending a really unique event. It was the inaugural swearing-in of officers for the Carcan Mad Car Land Association of Alberta. This is an association of Filipino Canadians from five communities that are in the same region in the Philippines, and for a number of different reasons, they identify very strongly with their home region. And this association is a provincial association, but they had so many members on their executive from Grand Prairie that they chose to host their AGM in Grand Prairie, even though their president and vice president and a number of other members were actually from Calgary, and there were members from all across the province. So we want to thank them very much for hosting that here in Grand Prairie. It was fantastic to see the number of people that turned out for the event, and it was also a great opportunity to speak to the representatives from, the representative from the Philippine, Filipino consulate here in, sorry, not the consulate, but their office in Vancouver, had a good opportunity to speak about the challenges for people working under the Temporary Foreign Worker Program, and also what opportunities the City of Grand Prairie would have to be a more welcoming community for newcomers, and so that was some valuable information. On the 22nd, I also, of course, attended at the stomped bust-out party to make the stomped week proclamation, along with the County of Grand Prairie, who made the similar proclamation. Later that day, I stopped by GPRC to take a turn in the Gibson's Petroleum 18-wheeler training simulator. It was a great opportunity to see some of the technology that's out there and that GPRC partners with, with industry. Inside the training simulator, they have a simulator for the big trucks, they also have a simulator for smaller vehicles. It was, probably says something that they didn't even let me on the simulated version of an 18-wheeler. They put me on the light-duty vehicle, and when they thought that I was doing really well, they turned all the roads icy at once and made me slip off the road. Later that evening, I attended at the keg as a celebrity server and, and host for their annual Keg Cares event, where all of the tips donated from clients that night go towards the kegs chosen charity, which in this case was the Free the Children organization. I want to thank everybody at the keg for undertaking that and for inviting me to attend, and also want to recognize the keg for quietly making a $10,000 donation to the community foundation that night, which was fantastic to see. On the 24th, I was also, of course, at the opening of the new Petro-Canada station on the city's west side. I want to thank Petro-Canada for their continued investment in the City of Grand Prairie. The facility is probably somewhere north of $10 million of investment in our community, and we certainly appreciate that. On the 25th, I was at our EMS station to help celebrate EMS Week, and the intent was to get there early and go on a ride-along. They had a 6:30, or sorry, 6 o'clock shift, and by the time I had to leave at 10:30, they hadn't received a call. And they said that it never happens, typically they have a call before 6:30. If they're not out of the station by 6:30, it's unusual. They said that, that depending on your point of view, I was good luck or bad luck, it was bad luck that I didn't get to go out on a call, but maybe I'm a good luck charm for everybody else outside of the EMS station that there were no emergencies that we had to attend. Later that day, leaving the EMS station, I took some of my EMS gear over to the opening of the Third Fire Hall, and I want to congratulate everybody on the city team that was involved in the planning of that facility and its realization. It's, although it's not rare, it's certainly an accomplishment when a facility comes in on time and under budget and above expectation, and I think we can certainly say that all three of those points are true in the Third Fire Hall. As was mentioned by councillor O'Toole, he and I were joined at the Antique Tractor Parade. Want to recognize some information that I got today, that that event actually raised $15,000 for, $15,000 for the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum, and thanks very much for the invitation to participate. Also on the 26th, I attended two ribbon cuttings for new buildings opening in Grand Prairie. The first was for the Commvest and Quality Property Management Building on the city's north side, just north of the North Side IGA. Norma Barber and her team are celebrating the opening of this facility, and I have to say that it really is a standout building. They put a lot of attention to detail, and the contractors and the team there should be congratulated. And then later that day, I, along with councillor Rice, had the pleasure of attending at the grand opening of the Northern Alberta Eye Institute, and as councillor Rice said, it is a, literally a world-class facility that I think, as a community, we might not realize that we have here. I'm taking a little bit of a tour. It was noted that they, it was a real eye-opener, as councillor Kogan says. It was noted that their equipment manufacturer is so proud of the facility, they're already flying in people from other communities to view this one, to say, this is how you should do it. So there've been people from Quebec, there've been people from all over Canada coming to Grand Prairie to see the quality of this installation. And so thanks very much to Dr. DJ Daniel Senegal and his wife Teresa and family for their commitment to our community, and in fact, to all of Northern Alberta and Northern Canada, in fact, to make sure that we have this level of services available in our community. And then finally, this morning, I attended at Muscat Seapark to take part in the City of Grand Prairie's corporate orientation, to welcome a number of new employees to the organization, and I just want to highlight that because I really appreciate the fact that as an organization, we value our employees so much that we take the time to welcome them to their jobs and help get them oriented about what our culture is within the organization and how important that they are as our resource. So thanks very much to the HR team and to our corporate leadership team for supporting and sponsoring those initiatives. And with that, I would adjourn our council meeting. Thank you very much.